Hold the meeting to order if you can call the roll, please.
Jeff Hart.
Here.
Glenn Gack.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Laurie Kinsky.
Here.
Jack Myler. Clear.
And then rise with the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members of tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First, we'll make a motion to approve the April 21st, 2021 special meeting minutes, the April 27th, 2021 board meeting minutes, the May's Board 2021 special meeting minutes. If I can have a second, please.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Go ahead and call the roll.
Glenn Gack.
Hi.
Tom Heck.
Hi.
Laurie Kinsky.
Hi.
Jack Myler.
Hi.
Jennifer Hart.
Hi.
Motion carried. And that brings us to special reports.
Well, I just added one to my list.
That's excellent.
Well, Mr. Arlesik just came in and just said that with an auditorium full of JRW parents watching the concert, the air conditioner just went out. So we need to complete this board meeting quickly before the concert's over.
That's incentive.
They're not going to be up.
Okay.
Anyway, we do, we have a really exciting presentation today. Our athletic director, Dave Boris, is here and he's going to tell us about some very special people, students that we have that have competed at a very high level and we want to recognize them today.
Thanks, Ed Hughes. Hi, everyone who have us tonight. It is a very special evening, exciting. We're here to honor, yeah, exactly everything, but thank you, though, thank you. We're here to honor some very special people, coaches, athletes, families of any of our athletes to this point that have qualified for the state tournament. And state tournament, obviously, you can quantify it as the playoffs in general, but this is at the highest level. So these are the ones that have made it through their district, sectionals, regionals, and have competed at the state level. We've got two-time state qualifier, we have first-time state qualifiers, we have state placer, state runner-up, and state champ with us tonight. So we just want to be, you know, we're very excited to honor these individuals and these coaches. So what we're going to do is we're going to call up by each program, we have three programs represented here tonight, and I call up each program, coach and athlete. Coach is going to say a few words about the athlete and I'll present them with our state recognition plaques. First up, cross-country, Coach Lisa Wade and Cheyenne Derta. Just come on over. Yeah, so Coach Wade, please go ahead because Cheyenne's a two-time and we did not, weren't able to have this last year, so we're kind of retroactively honoring her for last year's achievement as well, so go ahead, Coach.
All right. So I have the pleasure of introducing everyone to Cheyenne. I met Cheyenne when she was in eighth grade. I've been a teacher for over 20 years, coached multiple times and took off some time for four kids. So just got back into coaching and honestly was blessed my first year back to meet her. One of the hardest, because I was doing this in the car. So that's okay, this is what happens to a mom of four kids. Hardest working girl that I know. Because of that, she makes me look good. It has nothing to do with me. Honestly, she had the same coach for four years for cross-country and then I come in and sort of turn her world upside down with this new face and this new program and is she going to buy in? Is she going to be apprehensive about it? And I'm confident now today saying that, yep, she bought in, she bought in all the way. Junior season, she started, the first race of the season is a monster race. Anyone in cross-country knows what I'm talking about, we're at the shore. She threw down like a 21-minute, so we're running 3.1 miles. By the end of the season, she was in the 19th, which is phenomenal. We wrapped that up senior year and now Cheyenne is walking away, graduating from Riverside as the fastest girl cross-country runner that Riverside has ever had. So she bought in and is a year-round runner, endurance runner, and it brings me so much joy to share her with everyone because her running sort of gave me like, because I was a runner, faster than me. But, you know, she had this goal and she is our school record holder and she wants to run in college and you know what, we checked, I'll say we, but she checked every single box. School record holder, going to a D1 college on a full ride because of commitment, because of dedication, because of grit, and we need more teenagers to embrace these challenges and showcase to the world the great that they have and best, this is what this girl is. And I'm going to miss her tremendously next year, but we're road tripping, just everyone would have said, down to Stetson University in Florida because we are going to watch her run, you know, one of these beautiful races. So congratulations, Cheyenne. It was a pleasure coaching you and I can't wait to see the next adventure for you.
A little sidebar is Coach Wade, not only the head coach of the girls' cross-country team, but also head coach of the girls' track and field team. And with the combination of the male and female athletes that are competing this week in regionals, we have 19 total, Cheyenne being one of them, in the two-mile. So there's a chance to, you may be back here next month as well with hopefully some of your teammates. So that's awesome. So without further ado, on behalf of Riverside Board of Education, our administration, and the athletic department, we'd like to present you, Cheyenne, with both of your plaques for both years, 19 and 20, for qualifying for the state cross-country meeting. And Coach Wade, for being tremendous coach, leader, yours is yours as well. Thank you very much.
You close it, do I?
Sure. Yeah.
The cranny feet?
No, it's great, good job. Congratulations. Please see you for our state champion.
A long time ago. Yeah, so I'm reliving my experience through her.
And you think?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Next up, wrestling, if I can bring up these four gentlemen, led by Coach Tove. Okay, we qualified three for the state tournament this year. Danny Marge and Chris Rocha, both state qualifiers, and Tyler Wittrick, state placer. So Coach Tove is going to tell us a little about these three individuals.
I don't really want to follow that one up because my parents already know, like, I get emotional like that too, but I feel like I got it all out at the state tournament this year, hopefully, hopefully. I'll start with Chris. Well, all three of them have kind of been like brothers to me, like little brothers to me. I remember like coming up, when they were in seventh grade was my first year coming in here to coach and it was, I knew at that day that we were going to have a year soon in the future that was going to be one to remember here. Unfortunately, junior year didn't quite turn out the way we planned. But each of these kids worked out, I would work out personally, I know we weren't really supposed to, code rules or anything, but we'd find ways to talk and work out and get workouts in to continue their goal to make it to that state tournament. And I knew none of them were going to not let that see the light of day this year, regardless of what was going to happen. Chris, I'll talk about him first, he's right here, we got a two-time state qualifier. And if it wasn't for COVID, he'd probably be the career wins leader in school history. 148, I believe, 148 career wins. And the school record's 155, and I mean, we got maybe three-quarters of the matches that we normally do, so with that, it's insane. He also is a career takedown record holder at Riverside in single season. When it comes to talking about hard workers, all three of them, that's them to a T. If you look up the definition, I'm sure it says Chris Rocha, Danny Marge, and Tyler Wittrick in the dictionary. So as a coach, it made it easy. They listened to everything that I would have them do, they trusted in me and I trusted in them, and it worked out. I'm definitely going to miss them, I will say, because it's a hard group to come by. I got to get together because I got two more to get.
It's all right, it's all right, you've got time, man.
But Chris made a verbal commitment a couple weeks ago, he's going to be wrestling, continuing his education and wrestling career at Ganon over an Erie PA along with another former Riverside wrestler. So as sad as it is to see him go, it's awesome to see him continue carrying on with his career. I can't speak enough, I can't speak highly enough of all three of these kids, they're the heart of the team. They'll leave a special place with me, so. All right, Danny. We got Danny. I remember, I coached at Sharden prior to coming here to Riverside when I was doing my student teaching and I remember Danny because I saw him in the youth program at Riverside and then he was over at Sharden. And I was talking to his dad, I was like, oh my God, you got to get him transferred over to your Sharden, you got to keep him over here, you got to keep him over here. Well, thank God that didn't happen because then I ended up at Riverside and I would have been having to wrestle against him. Danny, like Chris, very hard worker, just naturally gifted and talented. I'm going to miss these guys tenfold. Danny is one that's always had kind of like a target on his back as everybody's like, all right, there's Danny Marge, we know the name. Year in and year out, he's posted beautiful records. I mean, he, if it wasn't for COVID, he kept telling me he was going to break the single-season win record, which by far he could have if we didn't have that situation this year. He finished as a state qualifier at 152 this year. And like Chris, it's just like, it's going to be difficult, it's going to be different without these guys, all three of them, because wrestling, I mean, we build bonds there. Like Chris, Danny recently, within the past couple hours, made a verbal commitment, or did you sign? I'm not lying, I didn't sign yet, verbal commitment to Mercer, so he's going to be continuing his education wrestling career right across from Ganon, they're now rivals over by Erie PA as well. Danny Marge, two-time district placer, one-time state qualifier, and as hard as it is to let him go, I know that he's going to keep coming back year in and year out. He said he's going to be my assistant in a couple years, so I'm going to hold him to that. And then last, we got Tyler Wittrick. Tyler, I remember him fondly when he came back out to wrestle, like, I wrestled in third grade and then I got this skin condition, my mom wouldn't let me wrestle. Not a good look for us, I guess, but anyway, I just remember him because he was wearing his goggle glasses and he comes up, he's like, I'm going to wrestle, I'm like, okay, yeah, come on out. Turns into be one of the stud wrestlers that we had. Freshman year, unfortunately, he ended up breaking his arm in a freak accident and got some pins in there. Otherwise, he could have been down at the state tournament as a freshman. But year in and year out, the parents of the wrestlers know that Tyler is one of the hardest but funnest kids to watch wrestle because he, from a coaching standpoint, does everything you don't want him to do, but then it works, so then it means it's bad for all the other kids because they're like, I want to be like Tyler, he can do that, I can do that. But I wouldn't change it for the world because that's got him to where he needed to be and I got him to get onto the state podium. And as awesome as it was, it just killed me this year for the way the state tournament was. It just broke my heart to see that the way it was ran, but it was still awesome enough to get these boys down there. Tyler Wittrick was, he finished sixth place at districts this year. The high school team as a whole, these three boys down at the state tournament, finished just right outside the top 10. We were inside the top 20 as a team down at the state tournament for Division One, which was pretty dang good. From a coaching standpoint, it doesn't get much better. I mean, my heart's racing right now, it's pounding because I know like after tonight then I'm not going to have them anymore. And it sucks. But with all good, with all bad things like coming to an end, it's really good to see them move on and continue their career. Tyler didn't make a decision yet, but he's going to come up with one here shortly on like he's going to continue his career. And it just, I can't say enough good things about all three of these boys, so, yeah.
Thanks, Coach.
I was going to cry because I thought I got it all out before, but then Wade was crying up here.
Before I present their plaques, I also want to just look around, seeing the parents here in support of, it's obvious, I mean, this is a huge undertaking, not only to be up here, but just to be committed in extracurriculars and it is a lot of time, a lot of things, it's just, it wasn't just this year. You know, this is a huge buildup and so, you know, fam, I thank you guys. I mean, it's obviously, you know, given to all of our coaches and the department and the school district, you know, all great kids to work with, it's awesome, so we appreciate it. Now, my pleasure to present on behalf of the Board of Education, District Administration, and the Athletic Department, your state plaques. Tyler? Chris? Danny? And Coach Tove. Job well done, guys.
You're going to need, I need some fill-ins after losing these guys.
It's going to be a hurtful year next year.
Okay, last but certainly not least, our swim program. Julia Hixson and Coach Kathy Babcock, come on up. I said in the introductions, we had a state runner-up and a state champion, well, it happens to be the same person, okay, for our swim and dive program. Julia, Coach, I'm not going to tell you her number, but tremendous, it's unbelievable. State champ sitting in front of us, that close to two-timer, you know, dual state champ, it's awesome. So Coach Babcock, please give her the due, yes.
Next year, next year it'll be two, two events where it's a state champion. So Julia was the runner-up in the para 50 free and the state champion and the state record holder of a time of 1 minute 16.6 seconds in the 100 para backstroke. Let's see, where do I start with Julia? One, I need to start with Julia as a sophomore, so we'll be here again and again, which is super fun and super exciting. It is, it is so awesome to coach someone who is talented, generous, kind, driven, self-motivated, and has never met someone that isn't going to be their best friend. Come on, it's true, it's true. Every meet, Julia is making friends with the competitors and then, I don't know, crushes them. In the pool, it's so much fun to be around Julia because Julia is, she works so hard at what she does and she takes what she does seriously, but she doesn't take herself seriously. There is, there's room for fun, there's room for enjoyment, and it's fun to be around. It's fun to coach and it's needed on teams, on teams that are competitive amongst themselves for the top spot. The swimmers, I know that the swim team loves and enjoys you because you are tremendously awesome and I'm so excited for what you're going to do in the future. We've talked about whether we continue down the para route or not. And once Julia's times, her times as they get faster, put her out of the para category and I really see that happening, you know, probably by Julia's senior year, that we're pushing to get, you know, to get out of that and show the world what one leg can do. Because you got it, Julia, you're fantastic.
Julia and Coach Babcock, it's my pleasure, on behalf of the Riverside Board of Education, Administration, and Athletic Department, present you with your state runner-up plaque and your state champion plaque. Tremendous, Coach Babcock. And also, before we give a final round of applause, Julia, you will be going up in the field house on the state championship wall for all to see forever as a state champion. Congratulations, awesome, Lisa, great job. Thank you.
Congratulations to all our athletes. I always think it's really something in the athletes that compete at that level and even our coaches are part of the Riverside program too. I mean, like I said, Coach Wade went to school here, Justin, you wrestled here and I remember you had a board meeting, you were fifth in state?
Yeah.
I mean, that doesn't happen very often, you've got kids and coaches and just participating at such a high level, achieving at that level is not very common. You've got a good program here, thank you. Take a quick memory.
Okay, sorry. All right, that takes us to old business, if I do have anything?
I wanted to follow back up, we talked in August, I think it was, about doing a board self-evaluation and as we come to time to do other evaluations, I just wanted to put that back out on the table, press the top button, consider how we want to do that and how we want to approach it.
I think you had sent out some samples?
Yeah, after the meeting where we originally brought it up as new business, there was some samples sent out about what it could look like.
Can you resend those?
Yes.
So just the simple things, we probably just need to set a date. How do you see this moving forward?
I think we have to agree upon what we want that evaluation to look like. I think Daniel had suggested that we need to do a working session to put that together and then I think when we come to doing, when it's time to do Dr. Kalis and Mr. Placco's evaluation, we, in setting their new objectives for the next year, we set objectives for ourselves to understand what do we want to evaluate at the end of the year.
And those should be coming out soon as well, so.
That's why I wanted to make sure we follow back up before that.
So those have to go out in June, so just so everybody knows, I'll probably, writing it down. Do you think we would have time to talk about that when we meet to do the details? To at least set the parameters for ourselves so that then we can do it and then maybe do it through following up? Or do you want to do it at the same time?
Yeah, I don't think, I just think we need to make sure we set them up close so that whatever goals we set for Dr. Kalis and Mr. Placco, we're considering how do we support that or what do we need to do as a board, you know, so we can come back and evaluate ourselves. So they all should kind of work together and then, yeah. So I think we could do, figure out what we want to evaluate and then, like you said, a month later, actually fill in. Do we usually, I can't remember from last year, we have a working session then to go over?
To do the, yeah, we usually do it either in executive session or during a supper.
When do we start working in June, the 22nd? Do you want to put something on the calendar for June or do you want to do it that? Blinda, what do you?
It doesn't, I'm not going to say it doesn't matter to me. Usually, we usually, we've had that meeting either sometime in June or early July.
It's not due until July the 3rd.
Because it's not due till the end of the year.
Correct.
And usually, I like at least two weeks to put those things together after we have conversations. So, last year was early.
Do you want to do it in June, just to get ahead of the game?
Yep, probably. So the 29th is our next board meeting, do you guys want to do it, want to keep it Tuesday?
Do we want to have a marathon board meeting and just do it then? Or does that sound really bad?
I don't know, I would be inclined to do that, maybe start the board meeting an hour earlier than usual? And just.
We could do executive session and do one before and one after.
Yeah, just do the same thing.
Doesn't matter to me. Do you want to do that?
I, that way it's one evening and we're committed to being here.
Does that work for everybody?
As far as the board discussion of their own goals or the evaluation of itself, that is not an executive session topic. That doesn't really impact when you do it, just how you do it.
So that would probably be a more work session as opposed to, okay. So we could do the executive session on the 29th to start reviewing the superintendent and treasurer's evaluations and then.
So that means I'm going to send out, I will, I will get to that by the superintendent. Like I have the blank formats and I can send out prior years and all that and I will then ask for you guys to have that information done by that meeting then.
Right.
And then we'll take notes and then we'll put it all together in July. So we'll start at 6 o'clock?
Yep.
So we'll have executive session before and after then?
Finish up whatever we don't get done in the first hour.
So as far as a working session then for our own self-evaluation, do we want to put something on the calendar for that?
Our board meeting for July is on the 27th. We have a finance meeting on the 22nd, I don't know when the other meetings are, but we have to have a policy meeting as well in June, sometime in June, aren't you saying?
On the 20th of July, we've got the strategic plan, some meeting as well.
Did you put that on the calendar yet?
No, it was, it's not on the calendar.
No, because it's not in my calendar.
But it changed in person.
Right, but.
No, I know, I was just.
So it's now in person, is it still at 8:00 AM? That's what I have on my calendar.
That's what I've got on my calendar.
8:00 AM?
That's what I have on my calendar.
I don't know, I don't have anything on my calendar because.
We talked about it.
I thought Patty told us today she was doing it on the 27th.
I have it on the 20th on my calendar. That doesn't count, right? Does anybody know what date it actually is? Jim? The strategic planning with Patty, is it July 20th or 27th?
I have it as, I believe it's 20th, let me check.
Yeah, I don't even have it in my calendar because I was reading for years.
Okay, that's what I have too, 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM. I, if we're in person, I might have a conflict because I'm not, I have travel time back and forth and this board meetings, with a morning meeting for that. If we were Zoom and not traveling, that's a little different.
The Zoom ends June 30th.
Right, I have no problem being in person, I just am looking at my agenda, my calendar for that day and I back the meetings right afterwards.
For your actual payment. Gotcha. Well, let me send an email to Patty then and see if we need to change the time.
Could you do it earlier?
I'm just going to say no because I got to get my kid on the bus, but no, I'm not sending my kid to school in July, so yes, I could do it earlier. I could do it earlier. Well, at least there's some time to figure that out.
Jim, will you reach out to Patty Cazell, please, and see if we can change the time? Thank you.
And then send out a meeting by the 20th, second on my calendar. I could.
Are we looking into a working session in July before the draft board meeting?
Well, I was looking to see, I guess when I brought that up, is if we didn't want to just try to roll into each other.
Combine.
Right, we didn't want to try to get the strategic plan later in the day.
So wait and see where we reschedule that?
That's kind of what I'm thinking. You know what I mean? Then put the work session on with it and.
And just do it all at once?
Doesn't mean anything.
Right, well, if we did that though, we couldn't be on the 20th, given your schedule.
Yeah, I meant later in the day, like an evening meeting, like we usually have.
I mean, could we not just do it on the 27th?
A work session, the strategic plan, you may get the work session and the board meeting?
Oh, Tom, what are you thinking?
I'm thinking efficiency.
Yeah, July, she had it for July 20th between eight and 8:45.
All right, I'll be flexible since I was, it was not, well received what I just said.
I just have no concept of how long this self-evaluation is going to take in a work session, but can we, can we put together something on, I guess, what we're going to be evaluating ourselves on and then we can circle back to this next month and schedule a date that we can all kind of try to figure out?
Yeah, Lori, you send out.
I'm going to resend that. Why don't we do that and we'll just circle back around next month to figure out what we want to do as far as time and things like that? There we are, give that?
Yeah.
All right.
Can we get the air commission first? I'm sweating.
All right, does anybody else have any old business? All right, this takes us to new business then. Do we have any new business?
We do.
Yeah, so we had a, we had a meeting with TDA yesterday and I'm going to let Dr. Kales talk about some of the things that we talked about, bringing us back around with our facilities plan and some of the things that we discussed that we were going to do in advance.
With the expectation of having this on in May, there's some things that we need to get on right away. Some of the same things that we had to do to the other sites when we were building the elementary schools. Among some other testing, environmental site assessments, geotech subsurface explorations, web land delineation surveys. What we would like to do is get moving on those, topographical survey as well. If you combine all these according to TDA, it would be somewhere between $30,000 and $35,000 to do the testing on the high school site. We've also asked TDA if they could present to the board in June as well. So we'd like to have them come in here and kind of give you an update of what's been going on. They're also in the process of doing that enrollment study as well. I know I've had my concerns in the past and expressed them to the board and some of the more current meetings are, but we have to do it in order to move forward. They were also talking about adjusted cost estimates as well. They can get in a little bit more detail about that. As we put this on the shelf for the last couple of years, it surprised me that it wasn't as high as I thought it would be. I think the original estimate, estimate back in what, 2019 was $131 million? And I think we're up to what, $135,000. It's a big change there, so. They told us that per square foot in 2019 was $258 on average and now in 2021 it's $308.
I think, I think in retrospect, because we had asked to put in some additional costs for cost increases that had not come out yet from the state of Ohio, we did ourselves a favor by doing that. And that's why, like, we're in a better position than we had anticipated with the new cost sets that came out they just said recently. So they'll be able to update us on all that in June. I mean, it was a productive meeting. I thought, you know, we talked about a lot of things and we're headed in what we think the public will want to see if we decide to move forward. So it was productive.
Anything else from new business? This takes us to the Board of Education Committee and Leaders on Reports. First thing is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. Some of the Business Advisory members today attended the Site Leadership Presentation. I know I saw Nick, Mr. Fairbine, put that on Twitter and there were Seasonal Business Advisory members there. The students presented projects in a small roundtable. It was about three or four minutes, supporting, supporting overview of the concept product and then followed with a question and answer discussion period. And then we usually have our last Business Advisory meeting on the same night as Senior Project Fair, but we're not having that this year due to COVID. So it's not the traditional, traditional Senior Project Fair that we always have to. Next is Curriculum and Programming and Boosters. Mr. Miley?
Okay, we had a curriculum meeting on May 18th and discussed several points. Talked about professional development for K-8 responsive classrooms and they're going to have three days of in-service in June and one in August for that. The, talked about all the academic programs that we use, computer programs and supports for the school. And there's some changes, dropped some, added a couple. And this is all stuff that the kids can do online at home or the teachers use as supplements to their curriculum. And it's all good stuff. So the purchase programs are going to be, some of them will show up even on the agenda tonight, I think. Career-based intervention courses, we talked about that. And the possibility of having that start with the 10th grade, ninth and 10th grade and targeting those areas. We talked about the senior credential options for 2021, 2022. And that's the co-ops that we've been kind of hoping to get going with the other school systems. Obviously, we already committed to the welding program and that's been up and running and doing fine. And like Mentor Schools wants to get involved with us there and exchange some kids and spots for that. Mentor is going to offer EMT and there's going to be forklift operating from the city. It's not all totally organized yet, but they're working on it for the next four years. And then we talked about staffing updates. And Jim's already kind of talked to us about a couple of those positions, so that covered that. And then we also, at the end, talked about Crossroads and their commitment to helping with the social emotional aspects of our students and teachers and what's going on in the district and looks like we're going to end up using them again next year. Tom, anything else?
Nope, you have covered everything.
Alyssa, anything? Perfect.
Excellent.
Boosters are done for the year, so that's something we'll look at for the next school year. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Head?
All right, we had Buildings and Grounds on the 18th of May. And we discussed a few things. We're having some leaking issues at the roof at River View and we're kind of working with the contractor who actually installed the roof. You wouldn't necessarily expect the roof to be leaking at this point, but we're looking through some issues to determine what, where the failure is. Whether it's a wrong type of brick that may have been used in a certain place or if there's other things that need to be investigated. We are, we are working through that issue and is there anything on that particular issue? Any updates from when we met on the 18th?
They are going to be out next week, middle of next week to reexamine while I'm on site with them. We're trying to see if there's any glaring evidence on the side of the buildings that allows driving rains to weave its way into the building and then drip into the classroom that's being affected. The material itself of the roofing looks fine. The coping over the top of the parquet wall looks fine. So it's something on the outer edges that's allowing driving rains from certain directions to come into the building and we're investigating that next week.
Roof leaks are always challenging to figure out, so hopefully we'll get the right people there next week and figure it out and seal the building up. We also talked about several other things. There's some, replacing some of the window flexi-glass at the moof next to the gym and replacing it with glass. And we're considering that, but needing a cost estimate, so we'll talk about that over the summer. And then we also talked about improving the sound system at the stadium. And so we're going to get some quotes there. We did get some quotes and we get some refinement there. But there are some issues with the speaker system there and so looking to upgrade it. Yeah, looking to upgrade it and make it commensurate with the great field we have. We'll certainly improve the stadium, so we're trying to figure out how to do that most cost-effectively. With regard to the summer workers, we usually have quite a crew that helps us out in the summer. This year, due to mostly things revolving around the reaction to coronavirus, we will have a crew, but it will be somewhat limited. And we're going to use those folks strategically to make sure that the buildings are clean and ready to go for starter school in August. And we'll, they'll be broken down, you know, working here at John R. and in the high school and then also at the Field House and then there will be work done at the elementary schools as well. And then last but not least, many people are aware that there's a pitting in the concrete at Parkside in River View that is going to be replaced coming up as soon as the school year is over and we'll figure out how to maintain that so that there's no pitting going forward into next year. But that pitted concrete is going to be removed and replaced, so that is moving forward. That was a big, a lot of conversation last year. And that's all I've got.
Maybe for alumni?
Well, Jack, anything I missed?
No, you're good.
Okay. And alumni, I, I'm not sure if they had a meeting or not. It was scheduled. I tried to attend, but nobody was here. So I don't know what's going on, but I will make sure that if there's a meeting next month that I attend.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Krenisky, policy and strategic plan.
For policy, you'll see that they're under the Buildings and Grounds, Buildings and Grounds Agenda today. There's policy for first review. And we do need to schedule a meeting. I don't know if we want to do that now or via email?
Can we do it the same day we do the finance meeting or would that kill everybody?
I just need to double check. What's our finance meeting?
That's the 24th of June? Or does that not give us enough time to fix anything? I can't imagine there's going to be anything to fix. Those are pretty standard policies that I think we have.
So 20, let me just check real quick.
Can we add another half an hour to that meeting and just do it then?
Yeah, the 24th, I can have them turned around for the 29th meeting.
Is that, is that date okay with people who have to attend?
Earlier?
We could do whatever you want. I could do earlier. Chuck's always here.
Chuck goes earlier.
7:30?
I can have coffee made by 6:30. I'm good.
So we get 7:30.
Do you want to do that? Jim, are you okay with that? Gary?
We'll have to give him the Gordon's talk.
7:30? Can you adjust?
Thank you.
I know, you're on the phone, right?
That gives me, that gives me a date by which I have to actually do something and read those, so, yeah.
Just so everybody knows, I did share that with you guys and we tried something different this time. You've actually got them in draft form, so you'll actually see the changes. And they're long, but they're all the same changes for multiple policies.
Yeah, if you take a look at the first page and a half, it describes what to look for and why the changes were made.
And it's multiple versions of the same policy.
Correct, for different.
This one should be a piece of cake.
Strategic plan, a lot of meetings going on, I believe, with staff and administration. Think about what we want to see in the strategic plan, so there's more. And we just mentioned that we'll be needing in July to go over additional information regarding that. That's it.
All right, Superintendent's report. Dr. Kales?
All right. Probably heard there's some discussion about whether or not masks will be mandated in the state of Ohio or even in other places like nursing homes and schools. And I want the board to understand that this is very indicative of what we've been dealing with throughout the whole year with contradicting notices from different organizations. So I thought I'd just use this as an example to show the board some of the issues that leaders are dealing with. So this is May 12th. Governor Dewine went on a, on TV, in a televised address to talk about how they're going to lift the mask requirements, the mask mandate on June 2nd. And in it, he mentions what is highlighted there, which is what's most important. He says, "Everyone can now control their own health. Everyone now, everyone can now control their own destiny." And people were very excited about the prospect of not having to wear masks. So what does this mean at this point on May 12th? Coming from the governor of the state of Ohio, that mask would not be required. Okay? So he didn't say a whole heck of a lot about schools in this, but everyone's interpretation was that you wouldn't have to wear masks after 12:01 a.m. on June 2nd. There's a lot of buzz with our students. I've heard a lot of buzz with our staff as well. People were very excited about it. Kids were very happy. We even videotaped one of our administrators taking off their mask for the first time in about a calendar year. It's just as a trial run. That's what happened. So some of our teachers were also excited as well. But the one thing we kept on asking ourselves is, why June 2nd? It's in the middle of the week. I mean, it's one thing to say, all right, you have to wear masks to the end of the school year. That would help us out a lot. Or at the end of the week, if you really had to make the change before the end of the school year. But the middle of the week, June 2nd, it even compounded the problem. Because if you look at the chart there, we're in school another three days if you count June 2nd, June 3rd, June 4th. We have to now deal with the idea of, do we keep the mask on or don't we? I've reached out to a lot of other schools in the area and most of them are just going to continue with their protocols. There's some that are in the school year even before June 2nd, some aren't, but most of them are keeping the protocol. Now, we had this discussion at the table, you know, a few, you know, was that work session? I think it was, a few weeks back. And we decided that we were going to keep the mask to the end of the school year, but now things have changed. So now I think we probably need to discuss this again to make sure we're all on the same page. Now, that wasn't the only notice to come out. On Friday, May 14th, we received a client alert from a school law firm specializing in school law. And we use this firm for special education issues. The lawyer who wrote this brief is actually the one who represents our district. In the heading, it reaffirmed what Governor Dewine said in his televised address. And it says, "Schools left with choice to continue requiring masks." So again, I asked, what does that mean? Well, to me, it means that it's not required, right? Says schools left the choice of continuing, a choice to continue requiring masks. All right. So then Saturday rolls around. This is Saturday, May 15th. And Governor Dewine used the Ohio Department of Education to what appears to be a contradiction to his televised address. In the ODE message, Justice School Districts, it says, "In order to maintain consistency and model safe behavior for Ohio students, these changes do not affect the existing order requiring the use of facial coverings and other health protocols." and other health protocols in our schools." And I'm thinking, well, what does that mean? And the televised address just days earlier, he's saying, well, you know, we're all going to be free of masks. Now we get this Saturday morning. I sent this to the board thinking, well, this answered our question for us. We still have to wear a mask. Because all year long, we've been telling the public that we're following the orders from the governor's office and also the Ohio Department of Health. So what does it mean to me? It means it's required. On May 17th, which is a Monday, Governor Dewine sent another update out. And it says, "As advised by the CDC, Ohio's order continues to require masking in congregate settings such as nursing homes and assisted living facilities and in settings with large numbers of unvaccinated individuals such as schools and daycare centers." Again, what does that mean? To me, it means it's required. May 17th. The Ohio Department of Health enacted a director's order to rescind mandatory mask wearing as of June 2nd at 12:01 a.m. This is the entity we have been following, like I said, regarding COVID health and safety protocols. I got online with our legal counsel as well. And Dan mentioned, well, it means that schools have a choice. I even called the Ohio Department of Health and talked to an individual down there. And by the end of the conversation, he believes that it's up to the locals. I didn't get that feeling in the early part of the conversation, but by the time we talked through it, that's what I got out of it. I also tried contacting the governor's office, but if you go online, you're not going to find any phone hotline or anything else. You have to fill out a form and type in a message. And I thought, and obviously my time. So what does it mean? Not required. So on Tuesday, May 18th, it appears Walter Haberfield again reaffirmed Governor Dewine's position on masks. If you read the heading, it says, "Governor Dewine requires schools to continue social distancing and mask wearing." What does that mean? Well, to me, it means it's required. On Tuesday, May 18th, another law firm representing several northeast Ohio schools weighed in on the issue. Their response supported the idea that mask wearing will be up to the local school boards beginning June 2nd. However, the CDC still encourages schools to wear masks up to the end of the school year. And if you read the bottom part of this, it says, "While the ODA no longer will require masks in Ohio schools on June 2nd, the federal Center for Disease Control, or the CDC, encourages that all school districts around the country continue to implement mask wearing through the end of the 2021 school year. The CDC's advice accounts for the fact that the COVID vaccine has not yet been approved for children aged 12 and younger, which amounts to around half of the typical school district student population." So what does that mean? Sounds like it's not required. So Lake County General Health District news release was put out Tuesday, May 18th. And it says, "Ohio businesses and schools will also be making their own determinations about how best to keep their employees, customers, and students safe." Pretty straightforward. What does that mean? That means it's not required. And then yesterday, Governor Dewine tweeted out, "We've heard from some health departments that they are getting questions from schools about isolation and quarantine." And my question sarcastically is, really? I can't understand why there's so much confusion. But basically, he says, "Beginning June 2nd, school districts have discretion about whether to continue masking and social distancing." What does that mean? Sounds like now Governor Dewine is saying it's not required. So we haven't filled a lot of calls in my office, but I know that there's going to be some questions about what we're going to do. Also, all districts have already put out communications we have not because I knew we were going to have this discussion. I don't know if the board wants to talk further about it or hold a meeting on it. But I do have to get a communication out sooner than later because we have three days we're going to have to deal with, with either masks or no masks or some type of option. And I don't know if we want to talk about it now or we want to talk about it after my presentation.
I assume we can just talk about it now since we just watched the whole presentation. So, I mean, I'm happy to go first. I fully believe it's not required that we leave it up to our parents to make the decision for their kids. And as of June 2nd at midnight, that we don't require that of our students.
I would agree.
Yep, I agree as well.
You got an opinion, Jack?
I have no opinion.
Before this, I had an opinion.
We will put out the.
Do we need to pass any kind of resolution for that?
We do. And we'll, you want to edit now or at the end?
During the action item portion of the meeting. So basically, we prepared two different resolution options for you, one of which is the one you just described. So that'll be the one that'll be during the action portion of the meeting.
What's it going to be under?
I'm sorry.
What, under what section?
Are you going to put buildings and grounds?
Do you have like a program?
I just ask that we make it clear to families that it is optional, that just like you said, the shields of the students are, you know, but.
I wanted to clarify, and I reached out to Dan about buses, school buses, because I wasn't sure, even though we rescinded the mask mandate for schools, that whether or not we get to wear on the bus. From my understanding, it's.
The CDC has suggested it's a good idea to continue that. But the state of Ohio has made it through the Department of Health perfectly clear that all health orders end 12:01, you know, the morning of June 2nd.
By doing this, I think we're consistent with what we've been saying the whole year, who we've been following, even the people who had pushed back on us when the orders would say, we follow the orders from the governor. We're following the orders from the ODH. I think it's crazy that this last three days at the SIS has been dropped on us to have to deal with something like this. But, you know, the days are getting a little hotter out there. Today was in the 80s. I looked at the forecast, doesn't look like it's going to get really hot the last couple of weeks here. But who knows? And the last three days of school, usually the kids are out active anyway. We're not requiring them for recess or lunch. You know, have things like field day and everything else going on. And in high school, where they're in, taking exams and they're out, they're not even in the whole time. We'll put out something, we'll put something together, Nick, and get it out.
Thank you.
Okay?
Good.
All right. Also, the 69 Riverside Commencement Class 2001 commencement will be Sunday, June 6th at 12 o'clock start. I do not have a time where you're supposed to get there, but I would assume it'd be, you know, maybe 45 minutes, an hour before. Just get there by 12. We're not going to process them with the students. We're going to just go to the platform stage that's going to be in one of the end zones.
Sure, we're not going to be covered, correct?
We are not.
I'll be, I'll be wearing a hat.
We couldn't have that if we put it, this is the problem. We couldn't have if we put it on the track and had the parents looking at the backs of all the kids' heads. And I said, I don't like that. So we have it in the end zone. We couldn't put a heavy stage on the end zone, and then the parents can sit on both sides. We'll have some seats on the track for.
I have a great cowboy hat. I'll be wearing it.
I did order some umbrellas just in case.
I'll bring my birch on, Lee.
If there's, if there's a rain issue, we're going to have a four o'clock start. We'll let everybody know that too. And if we can't even do it on the 6th, then it's the next day at 7:00 p.m. if we get rained out. Now, some of the thinkings I was thinking about in terms of commencement is during this time of the year, we actually have to address the students. And with everything going down with COVID, I'm sure they don't want to hear any more about COVID. And we got those comments to limit it. But I started thinking back and kind of dummishing about graduation, what kind of things you think about when you graduate. And it's always this time of year that you, at least for me, I start thinking about, what do I remember about it? And I don't remember much. Not even much about the commencement. In fact, one of the only things I remember about commencement is everyone put a penny in their hand. Not to give these guys ideas, but they'd shift their hand, which we're not because of COVID. They'd take a penny, they'd put it down. And our class had like 700 kids and they donated, they sent a paper like $4.53 or something. That's one thing I remember, something totally arbitrary and goofy, but it's one of the things. But anyway, I decided to ask the board, what did they remember about the last week of graduation? And I figured I'd start off. Okay? So this is me, that's maybe five. I was a rule follower and I did not skip school on senior skip day. I was in the school studio, I didn't even film for a class. One thing I remember, everybody was out at the school except me. I also remember realizing graduation would be the last time our class would be together. At one large group, and like I said, we had six, 700 kids on my graduating class. And funny that I remember this, late graduation, trying to decide whether to spend time with my girlfriend, who is now my wife, or go to grad parties where my goofy friends were because we weren't wanting to go to the same place. Now, you know what my answer is because she's my wife. And I could all to those parties. And just general excitement about what was next in the future. Things were moving so fast, you really don't remember much. So that's why I asked the board. I figured it'd be something fun to do. So, Mr. Hat.
You can hardly tell, you can hardly tell that was almost 40 years ago. It's almost like today, right? Except for the beard. You really hit the big deep for that one.
Well, you didn't have to go far for yours. You're a Riverside grad on the board. Now, you think I got the year right?
You did. So I, so I had just some glumsey memories of my last week at Riverside High School. But I, the thing I remember most distinctly is that we cut classes and we went to Headlands Beach. And we hung out there and we chased each other around the sand, did some swimming, had some fun. And so it was, it was definitely, it was a relaxing week. It was a lot of exciting excitement, right? Because you never, in that phase of my life, you know, so many things had changed or in flux for the next, you know, seven or eight years. You know, where am I going to be next year, right? It's always, it was always kind of exciting because, you know, I being in the, in school and then ultimately in the Navy, I said, where am I going to be next year at this time? I just never knew. And it was kind of an exciting time. So I definitely shared that experience.
Oh, God, I'm looking for you. BC. BC. He craps himself up.
Melinda.
What do I remember if I will tell you? Like, yep, my last senior year is done. In the dean's office and had school suspension. Thank you very much.
Well done.
With six or seven or eight or nine of our seniors, we had a great time in there. We had donuts. We had, we had a good old time. Like the last week of school, I spent like, yeah, pretty much at the beach. I probably saw you there. My mom's not here anymore, so I can say that. And she, she like the secret lumped me out. So, yeah. Yeah, it was great. It was great.
Yeah. Now, you're the elder statesman.
That is true.
How on the heck did you get that?
Look at that.
I cannot tell you.
That, this, I wow.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's some.
That's before John.
Opposition research is what that is.
I'm surprised, though, that that's on the line. Well, let's see. Back in 1973, there was a lot of things going on.
I wasn't even pulling out.
We, we were pretty happy because the war just ended. And we didn't, we knew we were the first class not going right to grad.
I think I did have more. I think I meant the war, the war.
Yeah. But, wow. The night we graduated, we graduated in our gym. And there was 120 of us. And I was the last person in the line without the cord. The first 20 in front of me all had their cord. Thanks to my Spanish class.
Not that you're bitter.
Right. But, but the thing that was ironic about that night is we had our graduation as all fun. Everybody had a great time. We went outside and all the cars in the parking lot were ruined because there was a hailstorm. And they were the size of not quite a softball.
Wow.
And I remember like my dad had an LTD with a vinyl roof. And there must have been 50 deaths in that roof and this hood.
This was graduation?
Graduation night. And, yeah, it was crazy. So every car had damage from it. And there's nothing we could do about it. And we didn't even really know that it was going on. We knew there was a storm, but we didn't know it was like that until we got outside. Yeah, the only other thing we did was our senior prank, which I hate to give other things away, but a bunch of us stole an outhouse and put it at the entrance of the school. And just lifted it off a pickup truck. So when the kids came in the next day, they're all walking around like, what is that? And it's an outhouse.
Dating yourself.
Well, I'm just saying, that's, that's what you had to do for fun.
So the pitcher on the right, as I understand it, is your golf pitcher?
Yeah.
And did you use just wood clubs?
I started out, no. I had Dave, Dave Hill Rams. But I got to tell you one other quick story. One of the best ones as an administrator graduation that I was involved in was when I was at Black River. And the kids stunt that night was in, down in Medina County, borderline Medina, Ashland, and Lorain. Was, there was Amish country right there too. And we had seven Amish schools in our district. And it was like international date night for the Amish. I forget what they called it, but anyhow, the kids stole an Amish wagon, put boards up and rolled it up on top of the first story cafeteria. And I came to work because I have a two-hour drive from up here down there. And I pull in like, it's like 5:30, 6:00 in the morning. And I see this red light up there in the roof. Blinking. And I get over there and here is an Amish buggy up on the roof. They didn't put the horse up, just the buggy. And I said, that's a pretty good stunt. How'd you get it up there? Because, you know, you're looking at 15, at least, get it up and over.
So since you're the elder statesman of the group and the board, just real quickly, let's give some perspective about the time that you graduated.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, my gosh.
The New York Yankees were sold for $10 million. Nixon was sworn in for a second term. Then New York Knicks win the FBA championship over the Lakers. Miami Dolphins completed an undefeated season. Song of the year was tie yellow ribbon around the old little tree, right? Trump nearly ended it gone. New cost, the average cost of a car in '73 was $4,052. Oscar for best pitcher, the sting. One gallon of gas was 39 cents and minimum wage was $1.60.
Yeah, the last four I can vouch for.
So who's next?
Oh, young one.
1990, right, Laurie?
Yep. Yeah. Hey, that hair took a lot of time. That's what I did on senior skip day.
Shirley Temple.
Yeah, I guess I remember just, I was not a rule follower. And I actually took my husband down that road with me. And I remember getting together with friends, people. You know, people that you had went to elementary school maybe with, but drifted apart from. But what I think was really unique about that time was just everybody got together, right? It wasn't just the people you normally hung out with. And I think that's one of the best things I remember from graduation time.
You were Edgewood?
Yes.
And finally, the only one with a colored picture? Jen Arden. 1993.
Yeah, when you text us this, I'm like, I literally remember very little, honestly, about my last week of graduation. The only thing I remember sadly, like a lot of it, was skipping school. Going to friends' houses and we'd roll back into class. And I had this home ec teacher remember to be like, you weren't here yesterday. And I'd say, I absolutely was here yesterday. She was like, you weren't? I'm like, but I was. She'd be like, I so missed you. I'm like, yeah, I guess you did. And I, yeah, I graduated from Manner with over 800 kids. So my graduation was filled with not knowing probably two-thirds of the names. You'd be like, I actually have never heard your name before? Like, you didn't even, I'd never heard people's names. Because at Manner, we, at that time, there were three junior highs that all filtered in. So you didn't even meet your entire graduating class until your sophomore year of high school. So you really, I mean, every year when I, I remember my first day of school, you literally could go into classrooms and not know a single person in your class at all.
Who were you in your graduation?
We were the last class to graduate from the front row. Yeah.
So were you with the girl that ended up on that, dating that Firestone guy?
And she was younger than me.
She was younger?
The one in Bachelorette?
Yeah.
She graduated in ninety-four. Thanks for that. Walked on memory lane.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Placco, can you beat that? I bet you can with five-year forecast. Wow. You're right, I'm so used to saying that. Okay, finance and audit legislative, Mrs. Grassi.
Yes, five-year forecast presentation will be five minutes or less.
Woo-hoo!
Putting the go-ups down here. So we had a finance committee meeting on the twentieth. We reviewed the five-year forecast and basically the things that we looked at were changes from November twenty-twenty versus the current forecast. We looked at when we'll be beginning our deficit spending. Just as a note, and I'm sure Mr. Placco will expound on this, that our cash balance for the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one is the highest cash balance we've ever had, which is pretty great. We talked about the S R two and S R three funds, the S R three fund, or S R two funds we have on the agenda today to be transferred to PI. The S R three funds, we won't be doing until next year because the paperwork for reimbursement is a little bit sketchy with the state right now. So we don't want to do that in advance of actually getting the money. So we'll determine this summer when those clarifications are issued, when we're going to do that. The state funding on our five-year forecast is still in flux because the state budget hasn't been passed yet. So basically that is my legislative update is that the state budget hasn't been passed yet, so we're still considering that. The other thing that we talked about was our, was we were going to be having a conversation with the Sheriff's Department at some point this week. I don't know if you already had that, discussing some of the things, issues that we had with workers' comp and some of the potential for rate increases, for example. And the last thing we talked about there was the welding lab, the change order that we had. We're going to, and we're going to be reviewing that information when we meet with TDA again, like just the, the volume of change orders that we had on that project. I had asked, when we reviewed the five-year forecast, I had asked Mr. Placco then to make, make one revision to that, which he did, for one of the administrative positions that we just talked about here today. So he did that and he added some dollars for that, that made sense. We also have some personnel revisions, personnel handbook revisions that are on the agenda that I had asked about after the meeting. And one of them is to add the HR position. And the other one that we have on the agenda is to, for open enrollment dates for the healthcare plan.
Yeah, just a change in enrollment dates, so we figured since we had updated the handbooks, we might as well do that. It's not changing.
Because the consortium is changing your enrollment dates. Other than that, there are like personnel things that we have on the agenda and it's finance and personnel and we, we have already reviewed now then, everybody heard the information at the executive session, our administrative contract renewal. So I think we're good there. And again, the only thing I have for legislative is the state budget, which has been passed, so.
Can I go back to something you said about the change orders and this discussion with TDA? You're having a discussion with them because we're talking about them for the high school facility project, but this is not, like, that was not acceptable.
And that there was a difference between the original change, we have something on the agenda today.
One of the, there's two change orders on the agenda tonight that are both for electrical changes for the twelve land. We had poor approved a change order last month that ended up being different than what we were approved. Actually went down for that one, but there was another increase. So change order twelve went down from eight hundred and thirty dollars to three hundred and nineteen dollars. And which change order thirteen, which is around eighteen hundred and eighty-six dollars. Most of this is electrical safety changes as far as right now, the wood shop that's next to the welding lab, if you get the power shut off in one lab, it shuts it off in the other lab as well. So they're disconnecting the two from each other, so they'll be separate from each other.
So are we comfortable and confident that if we've got like my welding lab project, that they've got thirteen change orders, that we want to put them in charge of a hundred and thirty-five million dollar potential high school project? We're all just good with rolling forward still?
Well, and that was what I wanted to, you know, have that conversation with them.
I don't think so.
I don't either, I didn't want to.
I mean, that thing ended up often way more than what we were even anticipating from the start.
It's very concerning to me. To even put them in charge of a project that large, if they couldn't get a project with that size under control. I have serious concerns about that.
So what was the discussion in the meeting that you did have? So, so we, we, I mean, we are going to be having a meeting with, we're there and we had our board meeting on the twenty-ninth. And I would suggest that at that time, if we have those concerns, that we should bring them up at that time. I don't want to do that individually, so.
But at the same token, if we're continuing to move forward and having them do other things with the facility, potential facility project, that makes me really uncomfortable.
And we, we did, we did discuss the change orders at the, at the finance meeting, but, you know, as far as the scope of what those change orders were, some of them were on us because we didn't think of certain things before the project had, had started. But again, on the other hand, you know, hopefully they would have thought of all those things.
Right, because those are the professionals that you hire, so that that's not an issue, that they don't have.
I have an email from, from the NAF that I got yesterday kind of explaining a little bit, solve for it to guys, so you have that. And then we, I'll let them know that, you know, they don't want us, want us to kind of overdo that at the next meeting when they come talk about facilities plan.
So to your point about moving forward, what will be going on between this meeting and our next meeting when there are dependents? We had talked about it before.
Yeah, we, we have to start organizing the, the studies of the property, which any of these will take six to eight weeks. They're going to reach out to us with some names of companies that they might be able to use.
We're going to have to do that work anyway. And it's not them doing the work, so between now and I think our next meeting, it's not the architects to do any of the things that we're asking to have done, so.
The results of those tests are going to impact.
Placemats.
And placemats.
I was more concerned, are they doing the work? Like, would it be work they owned or?
This is, this is done by all the different companies that will be, that some of them may be the same company that we use for our two elementary schools.
It's the environmental specialists of soil sampling. Or, and those might more concern them.
Are those kinds of things public record?
The studies?
No, the change orders.
Yeah, it's all public record.
But I mean, like, we could, for example, go to Wilby Eastlake and ask them to show us how many change orders they had because they use that company.
Yeah, yeah.
And get a ballpark at least.
But I think, sometimes I think that's not a hundred percent, right, they're not a hundred percent reflective because a lot of change orders are due to things that, that the district asks to have changed. Some of them are things that.
Yeah, I understand that, but within reason. Again, go back to when we originally talked about the lab versus the final price. There's quite a bit of difference. Quite a bit.
See, I think you should take a macro approach on it. Not looking at the smaller items, but maybe reaching out to some board members in other districts that have used TDA. They'll give you a, a, you know, a thirty thousand foot view of how they thought the project went. We could say, you know, in some of our other products that we may not have had a lot of change orders, but may, may not have been happy. But I think overall what the product looked like, it's going to be painful getting there anyway, you know how it is. I mean, even with our two new elementary schools, it isn't easy. People always say when you build a house, it's one of the most aggravating, frustrating things you can do. Imagine building a high school. So I, I would say find out who was the board members during the time period that they were doing North Olmstead and North Ridgeville, and north and south. And pick up the phone if you have a few minutes to call and just pick their brains. They'll tell you the truth.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to get this, this slide in.
Okay, Mr. Placco, you're up.
All right, have a, a little bit more of an S R update to give, then I'll go into the, the five-year forecast. Back on May seventh, the O D E released C C I P note four seventy-two. It's called steps to complete A R P S R two, S R three applications, which I kind of read the note as four hundred and seventy-two steps. So on May tenth, they released the application, we had to sign off on all of the assurances for the grant. They allocated one dollar to us temporarily until we signed off on those, on those assurances. Then, which we had to complete by May seventeen. Then on May twenty-fourth, which was yesterday, they returned the application to us as they were supposed to. And now we can begin budgeting and completing all the necessary reporting and planning requirements. And we have ninety days to complete the application. By June twenty-fourth, we're required to post on our website our plans for in-person instruction and continuity of services. The continuity of services plan needs to be revised and updated regularly with stakeholder input. So by August twentieth, we must complete and submit the entire application with all budget and reporting information. Then on May twenty-first, which was Friday at four thirty P M, they release C C I P note four seventy-three, which says they're going to release our, our allocations to us at about two-thirds of our award. And so we'll receive that interim allocation, which we did yesterday. They also said they're going to reallocate S R two funds. Says pursuant to the procedures for providing federal funding for new and significantly expanding community schools, which are charter schools. The department has modified allocations for school districts receiving S R two for their, for this coming year. Any decrease in allocations below the approved budget amount, which our budget had already been approved for S R two, will require us to submit a budget revision. And then we'll receive an email that the application has been returned to revision started. So I look today, they have it updated today. They lowered our allocation by twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty cents. So now that puts us in the, now we have to make accounting adjustments.
We already spent that money.
Right, so we have to move those expenses that we moved from general fund to S R, back off S R to general fund, revise our appropriations, have them go approved, reduce our expected revenue, file on the county auditor, all the normal Ohio law budgetary requirements we have to go through and then probably adjust our cash request to that lower amount.
How would they do that?
You know, this just came out, you know, in the last day or two. So we're working through that challenge right now. And then O D E came out with the guidance for the continuity of services plan that we have to put together in order to get our S R three allocation. And it says that we must establish a safe return to in-person instruction, a continuity of services plan by June twenty-fourth. And each district and community school should post that plan on its local website and then submit the links to that to the Ohio Department of Education by June twenty-fourth. And in that plan, it says the required elements of the plan. So if our requirements go on to identify the elements of the most up-to-date CDC guidance that must be addressed in the plan. So each district must include and modify, or modify to include, the extent to which it adopted policies and description of any such policies on each of the following mitigation strategies, including universal and correct mask wearing, physical distancing such as using cohorts, cohorts or pottying, hand washing and respiratory adequate, whatever that exactly means, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including improving ventilation, contact tracing and combination of isolation and quarantine in collaboration with the state, local, territorial and tribal health departments, diagnostic screening, testing, efforts to provide vaccinations to educators and other staff and students, and appropriate accommodations for students with disabilities with respect to the health and safety policies. We also must describe how we ensure the continuity of services, including but not limited to services to address students' academic needs, students and staff's social, emotional, mental health and other needs, which may include student health and food services. We also must periodically review, no less than every six months, for the duration of the S R grant period through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three, and revise our plan as appropriate. And we must seek input and take such input into account, you know, from various stakeholders. So those are the requirements to put a plan together, which, you know, as Dr. Kalas has presented, all the health orders are being rescinded and guidance is constantly changing. So what we truly have to do is kind of unclear at this point. And so we're going to continue to explore that. And then Ohio Department of Education released their, put out a release today for their public comment open for Ohio's proposed state plan for the American Rescue Plan for Elementary and Secondary School Relief Funds. So Ohio Department of Education put out a ninety-five page document today looking for their input for, for their S R funds. And I guess we're supposed to do something similar to that nature. This information just came out in the last twenty-four hours, so I don't really have any other guidance. Other than that, other than going, can we just write on a piece of paper that says we're going to provide in-person instruction that we did all school year and, you know, as we've done since River Sound has existed? I mean, I, I guess I'm being sarcastic when I'm saying that, but right now that's, that's where the guidance stands. And interestingly, we should provide vaccines to our staff. When we did that months ago, you know, it, it just seems like a lot of steps to go through and as, you know, restrictions and guidance is, is possibly changing.
No free money.
Yeah, but I wonder if they wrote all in stuff before?
No, they change it as they win. Whatever they're winning.
And then we'll go into the five-year forecast and I have to pull up the slides.
Change rules.
Those federal requirements?
Okay, a lot of these, I'm going to go through these slides here tonight. A lot of the stuff is, and we kind of repeat each time we do the forecast, a lot just for, for general information, just as a reminder. And these slides are the posts on the treasure page, a lot of the forecasts and the assumptions. So I'll kind of go quickly through this and, you know, take a look at. So Ohio Department of Education puts out a guide to how to read the five-year forecast. So this slide, this simply has a link to where that guidance can be found. It breaks out line by line, each item of the forecast. Forecast includes estimates based on the best information available at the time it's prepared. And we normally are required to file with O D E in the number and made of each fiscal year. It includes three years of actual data, five years of forecast data, the first forecast of year is the current fiscal year that we're running now. And it's important that, you know, the forecast only tells a small part of the story and that you need to read the notes and assumptions in order to understand what goes into those numbers. And also our forecast includes the general fund and the revenue from Lake County School Financing District. So just to have an executive overview, the thirty thousand foot view, we're solving through fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, which is the fifth year of the forecast. You know, there's, obviously there's still some remaining uncertainty of COVID nineteen. Deficit spending is expected to begin next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two, but just slightly, so that will likely change. And that's near expenditures exceed the revenues. But also with fiscal year twenty-two starts a new state funding budget and then again in twenty-twenty-four. And the, the, to know what's, how it's going to shake out yet is anybody's best guess right now. The, right now there's the governor's proposal, which basically flatlined our funding, reflected in the forecast, but we received more student wellness funds, which is outside of the forecast. But there's also the fair school funding plan that's out there and that would be a net positive increase to our forecast. You know, our revenue would go down, state revenue would go down, but the task through charter school funding would be eliminated. So our, our expenses and purchase services would go down more than our revenue would now to be a net aim of the forecast. If that was the final budget, but the Senate still has to release what they have in mind and they have to reconcile the differences. So it's really anybody's guess right now how it's going to shake out. And we typically don't know until last week of June how that shakes out. And our forecast also includes Lake County School Financing District, which was renewed in twenty-twenty in the primary election. And that goes through calendar year twenty-twenty-five, which covers the first half of fiscal year twenty-six, which isn't even on the forecast yet. And we saw we're seeing an increase in revenue due to the reallocation happening in effect January of this year. So our fiscal year revenue for just the financing districts is about two point six million for this year. We can still lower slightly higher levels in future years. So this is a really short summary. You can see in twenty-twenty-two, I apologize, it should be in red, this is when we start to deficit spend a little bit, where we have a healthy cash balance and, you know, as you know, it's like, it's just like a. And, you know, as you know, it's just like your weather forecast where, you know, what's happening tomorrow is fairly clear, but what happens in the future, it can change drastically by the time you get there. This slide here just gives a quick snapshot of the, our revenue streams. And it was general property taxes in the blue being the largest portion at fifty-eight percent of our revenue. And then the green section, unrestricted grants, and that's our state funding, is our next largest piece. So this year, we're anticipating total revenues of forty-nine point eight million for the district. Probably the, you know, the biggest revenue source is property taxes. This is just a listing of our current tax levies in place for a total mileage of thirty-four point one five mils. We go over this on a regular basis, and that's where we currently stand. We're in a triangle update year, so valuations will change and these tax rates will, will change appropriately and likely go down as evaluations go up. And then just a comparison of our tax rates to other school districts in Lake County. We are the, the third lowest, thirty-four point one five mils. Perry's at the bottom, at the lowest, but they have the power plant there, so you can't really count them. Madison is a little bit lower, and as we typically go back and forth of Madison based on who passed the last levy, it's usually the second, second place there. And expenditures, this is another chart just kind of showing our expenditure makeup. And we're expecting total expenditures of forty-six point seven million this year, with salary and benefits being the, the largest portion, which is normal for all public school districts. This slide here just kind of shows our true cash balance at the end of the fiscal year. You know, recommend, OD recommends at least a thirty, sixty-day cash balance. You can see we're, we're doing quite well, you know, it's a hundred and forty-one day cash balance expected for the end of this fiscal year. But you can see as we start to deficit spend, that starts to go down over time. And lastly, what could change on the forecast, as I already mentioned, you know, it's a triangle update year. We are, you know, the county auditor has mentioned possibly a double-digit increase in valuations, mostly being residential, commercials is not, you know, will not increase like that. And then, you know, will there be any delinquencies in two thousand and twenty-one, mostly of commercial property. If, if those businesses were affected by the, by COVID more than, you know, the residential housing market has been on fire lately, so I don't expect a lot of delinquencies in that area. But, you know, obviously we won't know until it's clear. And then actually before, the state buying budget is still unknown for the future. And then enrollments as well, we have Fairway Pines and, and the Encore Heasley Park, very large development there. And of course, if you drive through Concord and off of Girdle Road and around Parkside, there's a lot of development there. And actually, we just learned that, remember Concord Cliffs, they might start, they have a proposal in to get that housing plan through, so they might.
It's totally, they cleared it all over there, it's completely clear now.
Did they? They haven't been buying a while.
I just rode by the other day and I was like, oh.
Yeah, so they're going to start finally developing that, that piece of property that we all remember, we looked at heavily around two thousand and sixteen.
So maybe three acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really weird.
Yeah, and if they change the zoning there, which they probably will, that'll be crazy.
And then for expenditures, you know, how we utilize ESR three, now we have a lot more paperwork to go through. I'm not sure how we're going to work through that yet. Both, you know, we didn't include that in the forecast because, as we talked, if we realized savings by transferring things out of the general fund to ESR, we would do a fund transfer to PI for future projects. So it's a net zero effect on the forecast at, at the end, so we're, we'd left that out for now as we work through all, all of the requirements. Staff levels as well for next year, what that might look like based on, you know, retirements, enrollment changes, things like that. And also future healthcare rates and plan changes. We know we have no healthcare rate increase until January this year, and we don't know what that will look like in January. And also for purchase services, the fair school funding plan goes through. Our purchase services will go down because those expenses aren't passing through us. But if, you know, school funding stays the same way it is, and let's say more people want to go to an online program, charter school, that could negatively affect us. And also if, with next year, you know, will there be any needs to support nutritional services or athletics more than usual? You know, if there's any restrictions next year, events or, you know, things like that, we'll, we'll be yet to be seen. But right now, I, you know, I don't anticipate any major changes, but that's something that could change. And that pretty much takes me to the end of the short five-year forecast review. If there's any questions or if you want to discuss anything more detail.
Can I just ask one thing, did we, did we have a lot of delinquencies in January?
No.
We actually collected more than we did.
I'm just, the only reason I'm asking and like just to remind the public that, like, with mail the way that it was, some tax, some taxes, like my taxes did not get posted, and I found myself in a delinquent position just because my check didn't get there, it didn't arrive. And at some point, I think I was doing my taxes and went online to get my tax information and saw that there was a delinquency posted, right, and so then we have to go through this whole process to get that abated or whatever, yeah, so, which is just fine, they came through. But it, you know, I would suggest that if people find themselves in that position, that they actually go online, check and make sure that their taxes have been posted and then get that taken care of. I don't know if our delinquencies were affected as a result of the mail delays.
And then the audit office did, they didn't really advertise it, but they, they left the window open a lot longer than they said they would do because they knew of the mail delays. Plus, they were delayed in getting out because the information they got from the state was delayed, so the bills got delayed. And then, you know, I think the bills went out, you know, late January, and they were due February seventeenth. And I think they, they didn't really close collections until beginning of March. So they, you know, if you came in two weeks late, they didn't really, didn't.
Well, yeah, after two, after two cycles, after two cycles of my bank statement, I had to go and repay my taxes and put a stop payment on a check, and so, I'm not delinquent. I'll read it then.
Yeah, who like me, I can drive it through.
I will now.
You all set, all good? All right, thank you very much. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic comments are limited to three minutes. Okay, that then moves us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. A board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. Our first is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer in A through K. One second.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on those? We have a five-year forecast, we have some revisions on the, on the permanent appropriations for spending, spending items out of the, the title funds, if I recall. We have our transfer to the PI. Other than that, most of these are just normal. Right, we have two donations. One is just an anonymous donation to the Jerome Inquirer, fifty-fifty split on that, whoever made that, thank you. And Riverside, to Riverside Baseball for Nancy Payne. So any other discussion on finance and audit items? All right, can we call a roll?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel?
Sir, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent, A through J. One second.
One second.
Thank you. And again, this is a very lengthy list of end-of-year contract, what's that?
Yeah, it's this giant pile here.
Normal, normal and ordinary contract renewals and things of that.
Also includes the three-year contract with R A A is in that consent agenda.
That is item H. Is there any discussion? Then can we call a roll?
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now we have a resolution to approve the employment of Allison Dragulich, dance team advisor, as an athletic supplemental.
One second.
Any discussion? Can you call the roll?
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
I've seen.
Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum and programming need to add the item to the agenda regarding baseball teams.
Is everybody going to read it to you?
It'd be great.
Sure. On the recommendation of the superintendent's schools and taking into account the Ohio Department of Health Director Stephanie McLeod's May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one public health order relating to the wearing of masks. Governor Mike DeWine's May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one statement relating to the wearing of masks in schools. And the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one guidance from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention of Riverside Local School District hereby, number one, affirm that its mask policy is ineffective through June first, two thousand and twenty-one. Number two, suspends its face mask policy effective on June second, two thousand and twenty-one for all individuals. States that students and staff engaged in activities governed by the Ohio High School Athletic Association shall comply with the Ohio High School Athletic Association's mask requirements for that activity. Authorizes our students, employees, visitors, vendors, and contractors to continue at their own option to wear face masks while on school property or during school activities. And directs the superintendent to take such other action as may be necessary to implement the terms and intent of this resolution.
Very much.
Thank you.
Would we just say?
So is that going to be L?
That would be K, just being approval, right? Or do you add it as an additional? Does it vote on separately, or does it have to be, or can we just?
You can add it as an additional item on during the program.
So instead of K, that would be, so it would be A through L now?
L, okay. So motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through L.
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I just have one question. Back on, Gary. Is there a monetary cost to this now?
It's, it's my understanding that there is.
Yeah, I think they're, they're going to start implementing it.
It says there's no.
It says there's no fee for membership on the agenda.
Well, that, I, only reason I know is I know they passed that there's going to be a fee.
I, I decided on the agenda, so I'm not, it was really, really good.
No, the HSA. Sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know.
All right, well, can we still do it and just so everybody knows that there's going to be a cost?
For some reason, the way I think I read it was it wasn't a cost, there wasn't a fee for the membership, it was a fee for each of the sports that you register. So at the end of the day, we'll be paying a fee, I think, for sports that we, not for the membership.
Right, right.
So I think that's how I read it.
It says here, members of the Ohio Basketball Association will have to play, I don't know why it says play. Fifty dollars per OHSA sanctioned sport beginning with the twenty, 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 twenty-one, twenty-two school year. It says, oh, news here, also said the same thing. That the governing body of prep sports in Ohio on May fourth approved nine, no vote mandating each high school will contribute fifty dollars per sport in which the school participates in a new membership dues measure being implemented by the OHSA. Total dues for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year will range from three hundred per school to thirteen hundred depending on the number of OHSA sanctioned sports in which the school is participating. So it looks like it's fifty dollars for every sport we offer.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Billings Grounds.
Motion to approve the items on the Billings and Grounds consent agenda, items A and B, as recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Blacko, can you go to roll?
Linda, Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Motion carried. And then it's just on here that there was, this is the notice for the first reading, right, of the new and revised board policies, which is the.
Correct.
Lastly, we have a Board of Education update, if anyone has anything, anyone had?
Did, have we approved the graduation laws?
It was on there.
Is it a [inaudible]? Yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking, right, I'm sorry, I was looking at like, you know, some of the programs and what have you.
What was your last graduation? When the kids weren't able to graduate.
You support me tomorrow.
Is there anything else? All right, then next we have Finance Audit Personnel Committee Meeting, June twenty-fourth at eight A M. And our business meeting is Thursday, a business meeting Thursday twenty-ninth at seven P, that should be Tuesday, twenty-nine. It says Thursday at seven P M. And if that is it, I will make a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-five P M. If I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassley, go and call it all, please.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you all.